My presence in the court, we thank you so much. We thank you for the country we live in and we thank you for what you did for us so many years ago so that we may all have everlasting life. Lord, I ask that you bless this meeting, make the decisions made here today be pleasing unto you, and I ask that you send us a much-needed ring. Go with each and every family member to represent here today, keep them safe and out of harm's way, in your presence, amen.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor, respect, and flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
I did catch up.
I jumped the gun for you. That was my fault.
Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court, but the formal action will be taking on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. All right, now, Aaron, any, we're going to move on to old business, old business, business and a precinct project scheduling staffing, and I hadn't had all my coffee. That's my problem. So, what do y'all have going on?
Actually, we have two asphalt zippers. These machines can be utilized to dig up puddles, alligator cracking, complete road surface rebuild, where you would actually mill the asphalt down into the base, which makes the base a lot stronger. Having two of these, they are getting older. The ones that we have, the newer one is very heavy and hard to pick up even with a large machine. These new ones, as you look through here, they, you see that they have assist, fill assists on there, takes all the pressure, mail most of the pressure off while you're milling, off of the bucket. Also, they told me that they would give us more than what we could get in trade-in, so really the machine shouldn't cost that much to replace and update. It has the water tank on the machine rather than having it on the back of the loader, where you have to build a bracket to put it on, you've got to have a skid steer there wherever you are to do that. So, that's been a problem, but these machines have been amazing. Redid cabbard rope with the newer one. The water's very important for two reasons. One is to keep the tips clean, the tips last a whole lot longer, and number two, I just spoke to Barry Diller, the salesman for Stray County, and because I wanted it to put out enough water to be able to keep, get the base wetting up, to be able to not have to have a water truck behind it, have it blended in with the base so that you have the moisture you need to actually do the blading. And he said that if it's not a problem, he said if, even if we need a larger pump, that they would supply it at no extra cost than the estimate that he gave, and that they would make sure that it would work. This is something that is incorporated into the commercial type machines that you can rent, which, that, they've done that before, back 20 years ago, and it was exorbitant, the cost of it was at that time, so you can all imagine what it is today. And so, this is information, since it's not on the agenda to actually approve it, and then if, if you guys, next, next court meeting, we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda, wanted to give you time to look at, to think about it, to consider if you want to all go in together to buy this piece of machinery and save some time and money in redoing our roads. Actually, the machine does pay for it, so I think you'll find that out.
So, which one do you think about trading off?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Yes, because the newest one that has the water tank, which the other one didn't, and we were constantly replacing the bits on it. It's not used, but very little because of that, doesn't have the water system with it. And also, you have to actually either put it back on the trailer or lift it up and take a chance that a hydraulic line will break because there's no hatch on top that, where you can see those bits and replace them. Also, we've had blocks to be broken off because of the way it was used in the past, sometimes had to replace those blocks, and that's a very dangerous situation, a very difficult situation to do it over your head. And so, the newer one has the hatch that opens, and you're able to do that from the top, do it anywhere. This, the newest one, which they have now with the build, the assist on it, the, everything's hauled together, so you don't have to fight having a, so we took the Sweetwater to mill up those millings for the golf course. We had to take a skid steer to mount it, because you can't carry it on the front-end loader on the trailer. And so, we had to haul it down there, take a skid loader with us to put the tank on and stuff, so this will make it a lot simpler, a lot better machine, heavier machine, and mills quicker.
Only thing I see wrong with it is awfully long.
It is pretty long, that's true, but those people that are using them already love them.
This is a much better design than what we've been using, because I can speak for it, that's a pain in the, to do that, I mean, it's, so could we get them to just come do a demonstration every time we need them?
Oh dear. I've got 11 miles to do, I don't think someone's going to want to demonstrate that part.
Sure.
Anything further?
If nothing happens, we'll just get Silco next Monday.
Okay, we'll be ready.
I'll send you a list of what we're going to be.
I got all my sleeping through this morning. Thank you. Don't forget to turn it.
We're not free. By the time it's finished, it's opening up really good.
Good.
Thank you all for what you did.
All right, now, we'll get an update on fines and fees from Purdue Brandon. John, how are you today?
They're going down, aren't they?
Yeah.
Hello, good morning. My name is Jonathan Gally, I'm the attorney, or one of the attorneys out of the Lubbock office, which is the law firm of Purdue Brandon. We handle questions on your fines and fees through the justice course, and we also handle collection of property tax for all the candidates here in the county. Today, I'm going to talk to you about the work that we've been doing with your JP courts. First thing I want to start off by pointing out is that the county does not pay us a penny to do any of the work that we do in relation to the collections of fines and fees, okay? It's the defendant on these cases that ends up paying for our part of it, so the county's not out a single penny for that. Next, I'd like to say that Judge Lay in JP 1, Heather Orson, and Judge Webb and Carol in JP 2 do a fantastic job for the county. You guys are lucky to have them. We work really well with them, and they work really well with us, so a lot of the success that we have on the collection side has to do with the good job that they do in relation to turning stuff over and keeping everything up to date. The first page that you see here is a historical report, and in fact, all the numbers that we have in here are historical, meaning that these are the amounts that we've collected, disposed of, or cleared in relation to the entire time that we've had contracts collecting on these. If you turn to page two, page two is numbers specific to JP 1, and page number three is specific to JP 2. We can go over those numbers if you want to. Probably the best thing to do in relation to this meeting is just do it collectively. Page one is collectively JP 1 and JP 2 historically. If you look at the first column there, total turnover, that means the total amount of money to be collected has been turned over, it's about $3.7 million have been turned over historically to our firm to collect. The total amount collected in relation to what we do on our end of it, we've collected 1.8 million of that. Total disposed or cleared, meaning after it's been turned over to us, might not have been collected, but the courts have disposed of that, is about 881,000. And then, total liquidated, combining the amounts that are collected, also with the amounts that are disposed, we're looking at $2.7 million. In our office, what we do, as soon as the case gets turned over to us, turnover, I guess backing up a little bit, typically happens, it can happen as early as 60 days after the offense occurs. More than likely, on most occasions, that turnover occurs after there's a show cause hearing, the defendant fails to appear, or later on fails to pay anything. Once we get it, we start sending letters out, we start making phone calls, and so, we're the constant reminder to these defendants that have received citations in the county that they still owe the county money for this. And we continue on with that until one of the courts tells us to stop, okay? So, we'll continue to do that. And to that effect, if you look at the letters mailed, we've mailed out over 68,000 letters to defendants on these fines and fees. A part of mailing that stuff out, we do address correction and collection, and so, this also helps the court. And so, if we figure out that we've got a bad address for a defendant, we'll, our reps that we have in our call center will go back and research that particular defendant to see where that defendant may be living at that point. That, that helps us find the defendant, of course, but it also helps the court know where that defendant may be. And of course, we've made over three, 3,900 phone contacts during the time of collecting this money. If you looked at the pie chart here, 49% has been paid in relation to our collection efforts. That's a fantastic number. Typically, for fines and fees, a good number, sometimes around 30, 35%, maybe getting on up to 40%. We shoot as high as we possibly can, but just being as, being what it is, it's harder to collect money on this end of it than it is say property tax, because you have a bigger hammer on the property tax side. So, that 49% number is fantastic. Of everything that's been turned over to us historically, 72% of that has been liquidated, meaning it's either been collected or it's been cleared. One of the things that our firm does in relation to the fines and fees is, once a year, we have a case resolution campaign, used to be called warrant roundup, but we can't call it that anymore for whatever reason. I've just been told we can't, so it's called case resolution campaign. And what that is, is in addition to the letters that we mail out, in addition to the calls that we make, we have, you know, usually about a two-week period every month, and we do it for all our clients that want to opt into it, we'll send out a special postcard. It looks different than our typical letters do, it's a bright color, we change the colors every year, I don't know if it decides on the color, but it's always bright, that's the only thing I can tell you about that. And we do that because it's supposed to get the defendant's attention, because it's different, because, you know, after a while, we send these folks letters, they get used to seeing a letter from Purdue Brandon, you know, coming in their mailbox, but this card gets their attention, and typically, collection percentages go up, for all of our courts should participate in that every year, and so, that's very good. Another thing to consider in relation to these numbers is, like I said, if you're, when we're collecting delinquent taxes, property taxes, there's a pretty big difference in that, meaning that if somebody doesn't pay, they get a lawsuit called against them, and then if it's real property, or even if it's business personal property, and we take it all the way through the order of sale, their stuff can get sold, and so, there's a, there's a pretty good incentive for property owners to pay the property tax. When you're talking about fines and fees, we're dealing with a different animal, we don't have anything like that. The closest thing we have to it is Omni, which means that their driver's license gets entered into Omni, and if they have outstanding or delinquent fines and fees owed to the county, they cannot renew their driver's license once they need to, but that's not immediate, right? And so, we all know that, you know, that takes a little, they have a driver's license for a little while, and so, it may be a couple of years before they realize, oh, crap, I can't get my driver's license renewed. And so, it does work in our favor, it's just not automatic. But with that, I'll answer any questions that anyone has. I wanted to say that it's been a, it's a privilege, we find it to be a privilege to represent the county and the justice course in this endeavor, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with county. So, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. That's been a lot of years.
Yeah, a lot of years, a lot of years. And hopefully, we can come back before the year's out and give you a collection report in relation to our delinquent taxes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it. All right, now, we have Perry with Superior in Planning and Design.
He's going to give his presentation and try to file documents.
ALP, you want to just do it?
Yes.
Unless you want me to stand up?
Aye.
Yeah, look, it's a requirement, you stand up.
All right. It's like last time, Judge, I'm technically challenged. This has been, what, a year and a half process?
Not quite.
Year?
Right out of the year.
Oh, you guys don't want to see my contacts.
We might.
I doubt that, I doubt that. So, thank you for letting us come this morning and making this presentation, but as the judge has indicated, we've been working with the county and the airport now for about a year, doing the, an airport action plan and a layout plan. Got to turn it on first, though. So, I'm going to give you an overview of the process, we're going to review the planning process and the progress, what next steps are, and then take any of your questions that you might have. As far as the project, we started June of last year, and we try to keep these kinds of projects within that one-year timeframe, because it allows the airport sponsor that momentum to keep things going. We've completed a full update of the airport layout plan and provided the county with a narrative report, and I'm delivering those to the judge today, and he's going to get six of those, so if y'all want one, I'm sure we'll have one for you. We had a project steering committee as a part of this project, and that involved people from all different walks of life at the county, not just airport manager and tenants, but business owners in the community, the college, the schools, and so, we really had a well-rounded in EDC and the chamber and everybody, we had a lot of different people on that committee, and so, we got a lot of different input from different directions and put that into the product. So, as, as the process went, it kind of starts at the bottom there and sweeps up and to the right, we start out with an inventory, you want to know what, what's the airport got? What do we have at the airport in terms of signage and hangars and the terminal building and lighting and pavement and geometry and socioeconomics and the weather and all of that kind of stuff, and we, we do that to lay the groundwork for what we'll do the rest of the way through the product, and the next thing we'll do is we forecast a set of aviation demand. So, how many based aircraft are going to be at Winston Field over the next 20 years? How many operations will the airport grow from today through the, through the next 20 years? And what's that fleet mix look like? Is it all single-engine pistons, or is it a mix of twins and business jets and helicopters? And even if we get down into it granularly, even gliders and even things like that can be looked at from that. From the forecast, though, we, we need to identify then, what facilities do you need to have to accommodate that demand? So, are the runways adequate? Is the apron big enough? Are the, is the fuel storage correct in the right place, going to provide the right service? All of that kind of, all of those kinds of things in terms of the facilities at the airport, even looking into the terminal building, is it big enough? Does it, is there room in, part of what we looked at for, for your airport was, is there room in that for maybe a small restaurant? Or do we look elsewhere? Which is what we decided to do. From, from the facilities, then when we have identified those, we take a look at various different alternatives, how many alternative iterations we went through, but it was, there was between three and six different alternatives for runways and taxiways and, and the fuel farm, where was, where should it be? And we had long discussions about these kinds of things and, and how to arrive at the right solution for your airport. And from, from that series of alternatives, then, in conjunction with the judge and the committee that we had, we arrived at a preferred development, a preferred development direction. So, we took that direction then, and then we create a capital improvement plan and implementation plan. And so, that's where we start going from, what's, what's it going to be in terms of what might happen to what, this is what we need to do, this is what we need to do in the long term, and then we apply some costs to it and provide you then with a plan so that over the next 10 years, you've got an idea from an airport sponsor standpoint, these are the, these are the raw numbers in terms of what the project would be, but how much is the county going to need to come up with them? So, we've got that in the report, we've got it split out where this is the total cost, this is what the state or federal cost is going to be, and this is what the county's cost is going to be for each of those projects, since sometimes those costs are not even state or county, sometimes those costs are private monies when it comes to hangar development, or it could be private monies, depending on how you guys want to approach that.
Before you go much further, can you discuss the importance of the ALP for Texas, NFAA, and how it's all?
Yep, I got, I got, I got pages in there for this, but I was going to cover that when I, when I got to that. So, coming out of all of that alternatives and the capital improvement plan, we need to reflect that in the deliverables, and one of those deliverables is an airport layout plan. And that airport layout plan is a series of, I forget, there's like 14 drawings in, in the set of drawings for your plan set. And those, those drawings include the title sheet, then the airport layout drawing, which is the one drawing within that set that gets approved at both the county and this, it usually gets approved by, by the airport sponsor and the Federal Aviation Administration. And in Texas, though, Texas acts as the agent for the FAA, so they have the opportunity to approve the, the airport layout plan, so that it'll include the airport layout drawing and airspace drawing, interportions, terminary drawings, land use and property map. And so, I know we worked real close on the, on the property map and making sure that what the airports, what county has designated as airport property is specifically shown on that property map. And here's just a, a couple of the drawings that are in the set, and this being the airport layout drawing, this one, this is the one that gets approved. And the, the biggest reason that we show all that future development on your airport layout plan is if it's not on there, you guys can't go to the state and ask for money. You can't go to the state and ask for that 90 or 95%, depending on the math equations that they're working with nowadays. If it's not on here, whether it's a taxiway reconstruction, or an apron reconstruction, or the fuel farm, I think the fuel farm's a great example, because the fuel farm in the final plan that we came, went, came out with relocates the airport maintenance facility so that the fuel farm now is right there, front, dead and center on the apron, right next to the terminal building, so that there's not all this walking back and forth when people have to fuel their aircraft, whether they're base aircraft owners or their itinerant users, they're able to park at the terminal building, get fuel real easy, and it makes it, and so, we had to show as a part of that project, where are we going to put that? And because we're going to relocate that for the fuel farm, it becomes something that's funding-eligible. And so, now, we've got to show where it's going to go, and so, it all gets reflected in this airport layout plan, so that when the judge calls Texas and says, hey, Luis, we need to do the next project, and the next project's going to be, and he writes him a letter and gets it all in, on track and into the CIP so that it's ready to go, and you can do that because it's all in your approved airport layout plan, and hopefully, it's been justified in the narrative report. If it's not quite there, there's something changed, and we can certainly come back and help get it there. But the rest of the drawing set includes like, this is an interportion drawing, so it's one of those airspace drawings that we provide, and it looks at airspace, are you, do you have obstacles or obstructions to your approaches, to the airspace, and those kinds of things. Here's the property map as it exists, as it's been submitted, and it does show all the property, and we tried to color code it so that it's easy to see, and it's a little harder on, on these screens, but once it's, once it's on paper, it's certainly significantly easier to see. So, what's next? So, right now, the full ALP set, one, one step that we have to go to the FAA for is they have to go and, we have to submit it for an official airspace review. It's been an airspace review now for almost six weeks. So, hopefully, we've got something back from the FAA, they'd say they'll do it within 30 to 45 days. Well, we're getting up on that 45 days, so with holidays and things like that, sometimes it takes a little bit longer. So, once we get their comments back, if they even had any, and typically, they, we, our ALP sets don't get comments from the FAA, they're, they typically go through and are airspaceed and ready for approval, so once that happens, what we will do is we'll work through the judge and Texas to provide an approval process, and right now, what they're having that, the process is a digital process, so we've tried to go away from paper. So, we'll set it up so that it's provided to the judge and the PDF, and he can sign it with your authorization and send it to Texas. And so, I know we worked real close on the property map and making sure that what the airports, what county has designated as airport property is specifically shown on that property map. And here's just a couple of the drawings that are in the set. And this being the airport layout drawing, this one, this is the one that gets approved. And the biggest reason that we show all that future development on your airport layout plan is if it's not on there, you guys can't go to the state and ask for money. You can't go to the state and ask for that 90 or 95%, depending on the math equations that they're working with nowadays. If it's not on here, whether it's a taxiway reconstruction, or an apron reconstruction, or the fuel farm. I think the fuel farm's a great example because the fuel farm in the final plan that we came out with relocates the airport maintenance facility. So that the fuel farm now is right there, front, dead and center on the apron, right next to the terminal building, so that there's not all this walking back and forth when people have to fuel their aircraft, whether they're base aircraft owners or they're itinerant users. They're able to park at the terminal building, get fuel real easy, and it makes it. And so, we had to show as a part of that project, where are we going to put that? And because we're going to relocate that for the fuel farm, it becomes something that's funding-eligible. And so now we've got to show where it's going to go. And so, it all gets reflected in this airport layout plan so that when the judge calls Texas DOT and says, hey Luis, we need to do the next project, and the next project's gonna be. And he writes him a letter and gets it all in, on track and into the CIP so that it's ready to go. And you can do that because it's all in your approved airport layout plan. And hopefully, it's been justified in the narrative report. If it's not quite there, there's something changed, and we can certainly come back and help get it there. But the rest of the drawing set includes like, this is an interportion drawing. So it's one of those airspace drawings that we provide, and it looks at airspace. Are you, do you have obstacles or obstructions to your approaches, to the airspace, and those kinds of things? Here's the property map as it exists, as it's been submitted. And it does show all the property, and we tried to color code it so that it's easy to see, and it's a little harder on these screens. But once it's on paper, it's certainly significantly easier to see. So what's next? So right now, the full ALP set, one step that we have to go to the FAA for is they have to go and we have to submit it for an official airspace review. It's been an airspace review now for almost six weeks. So hopefully, we've got something back from the FAA. They'd say they'll do it within 30 to 45 days. Well, we're getting up on that 45 days. So with holidays and things like that, sometimes it takes a little bit longer. So, once we get their comments back, if they even had any, and typically they, we, our ALP sets don't get comments from the FAA. They're, they typically go through and are airspaceed and ready for approval. So once that happens, what we will do is we'll work through the judge and Texas DOT to provide an approval process. And right now, what they're having that, the process is a digital process. So we've tried to go away from paper. So we'll set it up so that it's provided to the judge and the PDF, and he can sign it with your authorization and send it to Texas DOT, and they'll sign it and send it back. And then, if need be, we can certainly produce hard copies and distribute that to whomever needs to get them. So that's the, I think that that's the question I think the judge is gonna ask of the commission is, once it comes back, do you authorize him to sign that ALP set and finalize the project? And that's really where we'll be at. Once, that'll put a ribbon on it, put a bow at the end, and that'll finalize the planning project. But that doesn't mean things at the airport stop. And they haven't stopped during this process. That's certainly something that we've emphasized is that the airport continue to do those things that are necessary to keep the airport in top shape, do the right things for the tenants and for the city and for the county. And so, you've got projects that are coming up to the airport with a taxiway and apron reconstruction. So that'll, that'll be, that's one of the top projects in our CIP and the plan. And so, that'll be one of those things that you get to experience and you get to grant match. And it causes some pain at the airport when construction, just like any place where construction projects happen, right? But.
Yeah, that one's in process now.
Is it? Okay. Good. So I think, yeah, I think that's the thing the judge is gonna ask for is your approval for him to provide the county's approval signature for the ALP set so he can go to Texas DOT for approval. And with that, I will open up the floor to the commissioners, were any questions you might have?
What does S and K and CIP stand for?
S and K is the three-letter identifier for Winston Field or the Snyder, or the Skerry County Airport. That's, the FAA assigns a three-letter identifier every airport. S and K just happens to be yours. CIP is capital improvement plan, so.
And this was members from, like he said, all walls in the community. And so, we will, all kinds of input, that was committed as well.
You don't have a plan, you can't implement it.
Yep. Failing to plan is planning fail. Is that the way it goes? All right.
So we're waiting on.
We're waiting on the FAA right now, as soon as they, as soon as they come back with the, and I checked on it last Friday. They still hadn't processed it all the way out. Said it was in process. I'm like, all right. Bless the federal government, they're very quick. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you all for your attention this morning. And I do have cards if anybody wants them, and you have questions later, you can certainly, you can certainly reach out. Drop that? You've already had one of that, so. I know you do.
I did, yes.
All right. Anything else?
Well, appreciate y'all coming and giving us an update on this going on and explaining what it's all about.
Well, hopefully it wasn't in too high a detail, too high a level. I was trying not to get into the weeds because the judge will tell you, I can get into the weeds.
And it's easy to with this. It really is.
There's, you ask about two acronyms. This report's probably got 45 or 50.
Is there legend for them?
Of course. No. I define them every time, so that you know, moving forward, that's what it is.
Well, thank you.
I'll leave all these in your office downstairs.
Okay.
That's all right with you.
Yes, sir. It absolutely is. Absolutely is. And we won't make you stay for the rest of the morning, so, but I do appreciate y'all coming in.
Yes, sir.
So actually, does the FAA put out a booklet or something? Our hospital does. We've got a booklet that's maybe a quarter inch thick, and that's all it does, is it shows what all of the acronyms mean.
The FAA doesn't. They kind of do in, the FAA has a series of advisory circulars. And there's an acronym glossary in the back of a number of the different advisory circulars. Usually it's specific to that advisory circular. They don't have just one that would cover them all because that would be.
So even in the paragraphs, it has that in, and the first paragraph that it has that acronym in, it doesn't explain, or it doesn't have it in parentheses, what that means?
In our report, it does. Yes, sir.
That's all.
In our report, it does. The FAA, they're not so nice about it.
There's so many acronyms that mean so many different things.
That's true.
It makes it confusing.
Depending on whether you're talking about a county, or an airport, or a hospital, or a school. It could be the same acronym, but means something completely different in different locations, right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right. We will go ahead and move on to the 2025 Closed Appraisal District Budget. So we have all looked at that. Terry, you had some comments this morning.
There are several counties in Texas that are submitting resolutions wanting the appraisal district to relook at their budgets. As all of you know, it has gone up exponentially over the last few years. A lot of it's in raises. We don't get, I think that we should at least talk about that. Angela can actually give you the numbers. She actually sends them to us every year, I think, of what the budget is for that year until you can actually go back and look at them. She knows what they are, and we've talked several times, and it is, it's getting out of hand.
Lady whoop, $100,000 plus every year.
That's one of the problems.
I know a lot of that also was due to the lawsuit, so as well prepared for the lawyers for that lawsuit.
I have requested from Hood County, the resolution that they've already submitted, other entities. It doesn't take the majority of the entities to be able to have them to relook at that budget. And they're sending it to us, and then we will look at it and make a decision.
So would you like to know action on the appraisal district budget today?
Yes.
Okay. Can you want that resolution on the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're right. There it is. $100,000 roughly each year.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
She presented you with this budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Why isn't she here today?
I can't speak for anybody else.
So she wasn't the one that put this on the agenda?
No, ma'am, I was. We have to accept, every entity has to accept the appraisal district budget each year. Or not. Or not. Okay. Extension, renewal, or modification of the indigent defense contracts for both the 132nd Judicial District Court and Skerry County Court and items from right there, too. This will, we're going into the fourth year that we have had contracts with attorneys for indigent defense. And I can tell you, in those three years that we've had so far, the county court, it has increased significantly, mostly because of the requirements of Texas Indigent Defense Commission on how we do things. And so, at one time, they were required to give them the document, but not necessarily make sure that it's completed and turned in. It was up to the defendant to do that. Now, we're required to basically babysit anybody who goes to jail and make sure that they get that document completed and turned in. There's really no way to verify whether they're being accurate or not, but and because we can't verify, there are a lot more that get appointed indigent defense. Just this week, in two days, appointed four. Last week, there was about 10. So their workload has increased. So having said that, the district judge, the district attorney, county attorney, and I are all very pleased with the service we get from the two attorneys that we use. As you know, we use Trey Keith up in district court and Jeanie Fuller in county court. That's the way they requested, Trey requested felonies and Jeanie requested misdemeanors. And so that's how we broke it out. When we were first looking, we were looking for one, but that's how it worked out. In that time, we kept the amount the same each year. They've requested, and we all agree, an increase is suitable for them. So $15,000 for the district, for Trey Keith for district court, and $7,000 is appropriate, we think, for Jeanie Fuller for county court. It's about a 14% increase, and I guarantee their case load is more than 14%. So, like I said, everybody that I've talked to, the judge, the two attorneys, are all happy with their services. So, question is, do we want to continue and extend the contract? And do we want to include the increase?
Well, it's not why we have a lot of choice.
As far as having termines, no, we're not.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Everybody's happy to do. I'd say we're still in contract. It would increase.
I agree. Okay. Can you give me the authorization to sign?
Authorization.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Position of the Health Unit Director for Timeline and Posting Job Description, Accepting of Applications and Timeline for Conducting Interviews and Matters Related There, Too. All right, so looking at, do you want a short timeline or a little bit longer timeline? If you want a short timeline, two weeks would be July 16th that we accept applications through. That's two weeks from today. Review them on the 17th, that Wednesday, and maybe interview the 18th or 19th. Or we go a little longer through the end of July, take applications through July 26th, review July 30th, and interview August 1st or 2nd.
I like the short one.
Short one. Okay, so I will make the motion then to accept applications through July 16th, review on July 17th, and interview, you want the 18th or 19th, Thursday or Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, July 18th. All in favor? The Policy on Precinct Safety Equipment. So currently, our purchasing policy states that, and this is specifically for the work boots, departments such as Parks Department, the Road and Bridge Department require their employees to wear work boots due to the nature of their job duties. Due to this requirement, the county will pay up to $150 per pair of work boots annually. If the boots are over that amount, the employee will be required to pay the difference. And this is something you requested, so I'll let you take that.
Yeah, you can't, we used to get a pair of work boots for $150 annually. You can't anymore. I mean, the minimum is, I think, $175 or $185 is what that we priced here in Snyder. And whether that's, it's hard to find, you can get Ariat or Red Wing. You're pretty limited when it comes to steel toe ones you can get here. I haven't priced them anywhere else yet. But I think we need to raise that up. I don't think we need to set a minimum on it. I think we've all got our budgets figured out and know what's reasonable.
I have a, I didn't say all that. You don't think you should set a minimum or a maximum?
A maximum.
I disagree with that. I think that there should be a maximum because then you're going to have people going and spending ridiculous amount of money on a pair of work boots. And if you purchase a pair of work boots for somebody and they quit a week later, are you going to go repossess those work boots? I mean, like, I know that we provide work boots, but I think that we need to set a, I do agree that it needs to go up to $150. My husband has to purchase his own work boots for his job. And I know $150 does not purchase those work boots. But I don't think that we should have, they can just spend whatever they want on a pair of work boots. And that's not a good steward of taxpayer dollars.
Okay, yeah, I'm a stud.
No, sir, you cannot. More than alligators.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I'm a stud. I think we ought to go to $200.
$200? I would agree with $200. I just don't think there's a lot of common sense lately. Sorry.
Dude, she looked around and she said that.
What's he looking at? Anybody pick a name? Just making a statement in general.
I believe she was looking up.
Art. Just bought a pair at Safety Plus. And I would say they were $185 for the, I mean, of course, they paid me. Overage is $50, so I'd say set it $200.
Set a motion and a sentence?
Yep.
All in favor? Review of Salary Survey.
Okay. We, of course, only received one, and it is under $50,000, which I was very grateful for. And it comes with, it'll do like a scale of our compensation as a total package. So it'll review what we provide, health insurance, our retirement. It kind of shows a holistic approach to what the employee is actually receiving along with our survey. It'll tell us where our weak spots are. And it'll do this for across other government-like entities. So we won't be, you know, up against Apple. We'll be up against other counties kind of like us. So we can get a clear picture of where we need to go, what we're probably maybe even too much in, so we can better plan for what we do with our money versus for our employees, actually, you know, later in the future. Sorry, talking in front of people is not my strong field. I will be the first to say that. Do y'all have any questions?
It also provides a job description?
Yes, yes. Thank you, which is huge because we don't have a lot of those and we really need them. Of course, job descriptions, and I have to bring for court. The elected official or department head will first review it, say, yes, this is good enough, and then y'all can approve it. And then we will adopt those descriptions, which will help a lot.
We've been trying to get that salary survey ready for what, two years?
I believe so. Any other?
And job descriptions for longer than that.
Our supervisor written they're on job descriptions in the past. Maybe they are correct, maybe they're not.
Right.
Do y'all have any questions? And of course, for Dan to sign, it is a one-year contract.
The process is a one-year process?
Yes. Hopefully, we will not have to. Once we get going, yeah.
Once you get an accurate salary schedule, salary survey of all the type of entities and some of the stuff surrounding areas and all of that, then if, as long as you stay in that same area, then you don't have to have that one done every year. Now, every five to 10 years, long-term, you would plan, depending on environmental type stuff, economic, all of that kind of stuff plays into it. But we haven't, I've been here over 10 years, and we've never done a salary survey. And we did one from TAC, that's, yeah, and that only does elected officials in my salary.
I know, we've been talking about this for two years at least. What's the cost you say?
Yes, sir.
We budgeted $50 for this year.
And it's $41,900.
That's a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Does that also include for him to sign?
Yes.
All right. Discussion of Sheriff's Fees, not going up this year.
No, sir. Do you relate the court, by the way?
I know. Do we need, do we, you need to present them with the sheriff's fees, or just?
I don't, I don't wanna do that, please.
Do we need a motion? No?
No change.
Alright.
Yeah, she does.
Okay, moving on to obtaining bids for improvement at Skerry County Kill Station, and I'm gonna give some main information, and then I'm gonna let Terry take over, 'cause he's got a lot more information than I do, he understands a little better than I do. So, we, uh, been audited by TCEQ, did well there, um, but we had some other testing done. Spill buckets, one of them, which is, I understand it's where water catches and whatnot, and it drains out before it gets into the fuel.
Go ahead, I understand.
It actually fills up, it, it won't drain any fuel, 'cause there is a lid that has a O-ring on it that actually stops it from going into the fuel, but it does fill that, that bucket up, and we had to pump it out.
Okay, and we have one that failed.
Yes.
At inspection, uh, and that's on one of the, one of them that is active tank.
Yes.
So, um, there are some other issues that go along with that, but we're looking at, uh, that, that we found, um, or that have been found, um, that need to be taken care of, and while we're getting those taken care of, um, Terry and I agree that it would be a good idea to go ahead and connect the two diesel tanks and the two gasoline tanks while it's open, 'cause they're gonna have to tear concrete out to do what they need to do. Costs a lot less to do that now, instead of trying to decide to do that later, and that's something that we've talked about for a while, because then you can get a full truck instead of half a truck.
Should be cheaper.
Should be cheaper for fuel. So, Terry, anything you wanna add to that?
Um, the, uh, if we don't do something pretty soon, uh, we will have to have, uh, two of the, uh, tank openings, the larger openings there, have got to be grounded. Uh, and of course, this, if we get the new ones, get them raised up above the water levels, then that will all be done during the time that, and we won't need that particular part of it, uh, to get everything above water level. Now, while on earth, they pour that semen above, I do not, I don't understand that, but that's what we've got. So, uh, when you get those tanks connected, that's going to provide us a longer, uh, amount of time between fill-ups. It should reduce our, uh, cost of fuel because of the, uh, large amount we're buying the full transport rather than just four thousand gallons. We were thinking that these tanks were six or eight thousand gallons, from most information that we received before we purchased that, come to find out they're four thousand, not the gasoline diesel that we have, I think the, uh, super unleaded was three thousand gallons, and I think that maybe the other diesel may be four. We also are working and have been working for some time, trying to get someone to help us figure out how to change our software and printer inside of the building to be able to tell us the amount of fuel taken. Uh, we've got this head out there on this pump, and all that information should be there, but it evidently isn't programmed to do it. And TCEQ requires it, because you take those two numbers, the number of them, so what it does right now is it tells you the amount of fuel that's in the tank. But they also want to see and have a report daily of how much fuel has been taken from the diesel and from the gas tank. Without that, you'd get a fine, we almost got a fine this year.
Yeah, they didn't like our process.
It was not the right process, and so, this is something else that can be done, uh, during this time of, of getting this station into the correct uh, mode that we need for C, TCEQ not to find us, 'cause if it continues where it is, where are we gonna get?
I thought you were gonna say century, great century.
Oh, yeah, there you go. And so, uh, that, uh, we, we haven't figured out yet, we've got two or three different guys that says that they can make it work. One guy's around Houston, and he says if he was closer, he could get it done in just a little while. One guy told me it could be as much as four, five thousand dollars to upgrade the system to do this, these modules. So, anyway, got a lot of work to do, and it definitely needs to be done.
Yeah, so when, in the TCEQ process, we found out that one of the spill buckets was leaking, um, and so, I'm in contact with this company, and asked him to give us a price on repair and whatever else we wanna do. In the meantime, Terry is working with another company on the capotic protection, um, and, uh, gets a price from them on some of the things, and, or on doing kinda the same thing, and they're vastly different. Uh, one for sure is over fifty thousand, so, uh, these are things that really need to be done to keep us out of trouble with TCEQ. So, we feel like we should go out for bids on these, I think the other one was close to, close to fifty, but, uh, we think it's, it's best to go out for bids, and we can do one of two things, uh, put it in next year's budget, which we have time for, uh, to get the bids and put it in there. Or, uh, Fund Twenty-Nine, we don't need to really get into that too much, so.
We don't have time for this to be sharing with us on the software side.
Right.
That has to be done.
That has to be done now.
For the reports to be, uh, set up for TCEQ for the next year. If we, we get way behind, it's gonna cost us some money.
Yeah.
To definitely bring those reports up today.
If you wait till next year, how long is it gonna be?
You're, you're talking about them tearing up the, uh, cement and raising up those. It's gonna take, it's gonna take, uh, once they start, it's gonna take probably two, three weeks for the time they tear all that cement up, they tie those tanks together, they raise up those, and, and really, you know, it's, all of those containment's have an expiration. And so, one of these guys said, hey, why don't we just, we'll, we'll even provide three of them in the, in the estimate that we've already given you. And I said, well, you're so close to fifty thousand dollars that I'm thinking the court is probably gonna wanna go out for bids to make sure, uh, and, and do the due diligence for the taxpayer.
I mean, so if we wait till next year, we have time to get it all done before TCEQ came back in.
Except.
Except for the reporting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so, basically what that is, is they're gonna, with their stick, and they're sticking it.
Right.
Old style of way doing it, um, she said that we need this, it's capital S I R, I don't know what it stands for, but it's this program that, uh, will basically do that for you.
Yes.
It wasn't quite an admonition, but it was awfully close to one.
Yep.
So, it was, you really need to do this and do it soon.
Yeah, you've seen the notebook she sent.
Yeah.
It is involved.
Yeah.
Thick.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of areas that we need to improve on there, but we need to do it soon, rather than later.
Well, we own it, and it's extremely useful, so.
You want to go out for bids and get it back August sixth?
Yes.
Next, next August meeting? Second, all in favor?
It is the Statistical Inventory Reconciliation Program.
Thank you.
Now, if you can just go fix the thing where it worked.
Yeah, no, I can Google it, I can fix it.
I didn't take the time to do that.
I, she explained it to me, but I didn't take that time. Another, another acronym.
Yeah. Language differences.
Making sure that you're not getting water in the tanks.
That's their concern.
We've had that issue before.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is obtaining bids for improvements at the weigh station, and this is something that Jeff and I have been kinda looking into. Uh, we went to Mitchell County and looked at theirs, and it is, it is pretty awesome. We are not looking to go there right now, I don't think, uh, we're looking at, uh, and you and I talked about this several years ago, covering the weigh station, one of those troopers.
Absolutely.
If I was a trooper, I would not be out there this summer, it's just way too hot. We got a price for one, uh, that would, uh, or Jeff got a price for one. It was, if for a hundred and ten feet long, twenty-eight foot wide, and sixteen foot tall, I'll let you take over from there on that.
Yeah, I think it was, I didn't bring it, sixty, seven thousand for it, we, we first thought about doing it eighty foot, but we met with Edro out there, and we stopped, pulled a truck in and measured it, and some of these trucks now are just, they're a lot longer, and to give him room to get around it and everything, we figured, he figured out it'd be about a hundred and ten foot. I, I just think it's a, we're losing a lot of.
Income.
Income on it, and our roads are suffering because of it, because you can watch these trucks, they're going, they're going over there where they're in the shade all day, and that's where they're getting that interstate, uh, and those trucks suddenly turn their light on, they're hitting eighty-four and coming right down eighty-four and six forty-four and just bypassing that. Zero one eighty. And tearing our roads up.
Yes, but we, we were out there, uh, and he said, flip the switch, he was gonna flip the switch, he turned it on, and you watch him, it's immediate, they start going in. Except for a few of them, they kept on going.
Twelve minutes, and you could not get another truck in, that facility that was ten acres.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just amazing, and he, he told us that just, just a citation for going around the light was automatic, two hundred and fifty dollars. It was a real nice setup, I mean, that's not what we're after, we're just trying to get, provide them a place where maybe they'll come over here and work. I'm like, damn, that is like we've been having in our communities.
Yeah.
There is something else to consider as well, I don't know if any of you have gone over and looked at that one, I certainly haven't, but I did go up to, uh, I twenty-seven and look at that one, and, I mean, they, and I'm hearing now you can't do that in Texas, where they had their JP right there, they collected the fine because of these out-of-town, out-of-state trucks, they're not gonna pay, you know, so they were getting it right there. But what I would say is that the one other thing that I don't think would cost that much more would to make a pit for them, because they have to get under those trucks to be able to look at them, and if you've ever been in a truck, you know that you're getting this stuff all over you, trying to roll around under them, and some places you cannot get under. And so, if we could provide a pit that they could walk down into and inspect from below, we would also get more, because they would find more. They would find brakes out of adjustment, they would find lines that, under their air lines and things that are cracked and need to be replaced, and, uh, they would see the tires better, and there's a lot of reasons for it, uh, and, and like I said, just, it would make more far from.
Right, and, and they did talk about that, having the JP out there, um, it goes real close to entrapment. I think that's what you were saying.
We need to entrap those outstanding suckers.
But the way they, they set theirs up different, it's not parallel to the road, they have to pull off, turn in, and come back, back around underneath the cover. And they redesigned it that way, and that's, that was the first time they redesigned it that way, and then he explained why, and I don't remember the reason why.
The big heavy loads, he said they give them room to turn, 'cause they can't turn as sharp as, as the lighter loads.
So, uh, but they did have a pit there, and they modeled it, the style of it, after that one up there, yeah.
Oh, that was so nice, for them to be able to get under there.
And I did speak to the landowner to see if he was willing to sell any more land out there, he was not interested.
He owns the R S and P part as well.
Probably.
That's, that R S and P was right there, I just wonder if Bruce Gellman still has that, or if it went back to the landowner.
I don't know if they bought that or not.
That's a pretty wide area there that would complement that.
I don't know, I don't know if they bought that or not, you could because they have R S and P that I have at Hermley, it's on, uh, somebody in Lorren.
I know some of them did buy it, because they were selling the gravel, that was on the bed of that, where the tracks were, but I didn't know, I didn't know if everyone did.
I don't know.
I know there are areas that they did.
Could you?
I can try.
Tell.
Kind of a needle in my haystack, if you don't know exactly who they are and when they did it, and all that, so.
You can go.
We can pull it up on appraisal district and see who does, on the map, see who it's switched to.
You can go to, but I have a problem with, 'cause I don't own the R S and P part.
Oh, okay.
And this is just west of the old E-ZO T P.
So, this does bring up another question as to engineering and all of that, is that gonna be required? I would think engineering would be required for a structure, um, so, let me do some research before we really get too deep into doing that, or going out for bids on that, um, and then I'll bring it back to the next agenda.
It's really sad that we didn't do this when we had the opportunity, they guaranteed us to pay it off in two years.
We could've had the one with Tim Lorren.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was supposed to meet with him, but, uh, something happened, he, he canceled, and I kept trying to get back, but I never could back, so.
They're not happy with us.
I'm sure there's engineers for that pit and cover.
Yeah.
It could be.
So, let me, let me, uh, let me do some research, I'll bring it back, I'll be with the line sixteen meeting, and have some answers on what we are going to be required to do as far as the engineering, and if we need to go through the same process, like, mess. Okay, uh, election services agreement with Hermley I S D.
Hi, Lori.
Hey.
How are you?
Tell us about this one.
Well, they just asked that we add them to our election in November, and we've gone to their school board, them and ours before, and they don't want to do their election, so we charged them a thousand dollars per entity to do their election.
Okay.
And they asked that they could get the contracts so we can get them rolling, so they can get it on their agenda for their school board.
Did I make a motion that we add the S I R fiscal barrier to our?
Hermley, Hermley, I'm sorry. So far, it's just Hermley, but I'm sure Ivor will be on there as well.
Wish they all would.
Can you allow me to sign?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Yeah, let me take out my microphone.
I gotta wait, I need to count.
Yeah, wait, don't go, we got a grass fire. One light.
Uh, okay, um, we won't get too deep yet, but, um, I've handed you some things that, uh, kinda go over different aspects, so, um, what I'm, what I'm looking at is how we're gonna go about this this year to go over the budget, and I, I picked uh, one, two, three, four, five, six to go over today. Yeah, so, yeah, this, this is a good time.
Can I go with you?
Come on! So, my, my question is gonna be, so there, there are certain areas of the budget that are under ten thousand dollars, so I've broken it out, um, in, in my notes that I have not provided yet, and I'm gonna wait, I've provided you today's departments. So, we've got under ten thousand, we've got ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five to fifty thousand, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, and then anything over a hundred thousand, and these are different departments, and they are amounts of their requests. The first question is, do you wanna see anything, any increases under ten thousand, that would include decreases as well in, in separate? Or do you want me to just, I can provide those for you at the next meeting, um, just so you have information on it, or do you wanna go over those?
I'd like to see all of them.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna give them to you, but are you gonna wanna, like, we're going over these today, are you gonna wanna go over with the department head, I guess is where I'm really headed, is do you want that department head in here? I guess is where I'm really headed is, do you want that department head in here to discuss if it's under ten thousand, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, what's the breakover for when you want a department head in here to discuss?
Well, I think any over or under, we need the information from there.
Okay, so you wanna see every department head?
Why it's under or why it's over. That's just my thought, so. I know that's going.
Because like mine is eight hundred dollars and there are some that are, and, and that one, I'm, I'm gonna have an explanation so that you see, every line is described there.
I don't wanna go over your eight hundred dollars.
Okay. We can, we've got no problem with that.
But I just like, for the court, because it is budgeting, we're going here to ask questions.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, and I, I.
There ought to be a, a minimum though, because some of this is inflation, uh, it's, it's gonna be your, uh, your insurance, it's gonna be your, your wages and other, other things, you know, so five or ten thousand one so that you're not looking at things that are, we have no control over, which we don't have control over, inflationary costs of postage, of software and, and other things that, um, that are out there, so you're, you're going over something that's not even relevant. So things that are, that they come up in their budgets that are other than those things, I have no problem going over them whatsoever.
Just a question I asked, uh, so I've broken it down and I'll give you the documents for that later, but these are just specific departments today.
Okay.
Um, the question I asked was, um, do you wanna meet with the department head on smaller, I've, I've broken down where we have under ten thousand, ten to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five to fifty thousand, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand and then a hundred thousand above, and that's a separate document that I have. Um, do you want to see the department heads for every department or just the ones over a certain amount? Uh, so let me give, let me look at this one here. I'll get this up here. Um, we'll go over, uh, like commissioner's court, uh, when we do, um, so it's, that was twenty, twenty-four eight eighty-eight, four eighty-eight is the increase and we'll look at that, um, at some point. Uh, do you wanna see the tax collector for twelve thousand one hundred dollars, the increases postage, travel, maintenance agreements and bonds and note, bonds and notaries, uh, which like you said was, uh, nothing you can do, huh? Yeah.
Well, I agree, there's nothing you can do about it, but.
I mean, you asking them is not gonna help us.
No.
We're talking about us asking questions to elected or appointed officials.
Right.
So those are particular things that, there's no reason for us to undertake.
My, my issue is, we're out in the public, we're gonna get asked.
We are.
Even, even if it is inflationary.
You will, you will have this information, okay? Guarantee you will have this information, district clerk, her budget's going up twenty-five dollars, you want the district clerk to come down and discuss why her budget's going, going up to twenty-five dollars?
Yes.
Okay, uh, JP one, their budget's going up a hundred dollars, you want her to come down or him to come down and explain why it's going up a hundred dollars? That's, that's the ones I'm, I'm discussing is.
Let's, let's do the ten thousand.
Okay.
Like I said, we'll add the information.
Yeah.
Because we're out in the public, we're gonna get phone calls at some time of year and we gotta.
Absolutely, yeah, and you will have all this information, I'm just, I'm still compiling it all right now, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Hello.
Thank you for having me.
You bet.
So I didn't have this one on the list because I wasn't sure, I had to check with Judge Cooley on her schedule first and I appreciate you taking the time that I, having the time to come down today. Um, we're gonna go over Judge Cooley's, uh, request, um, he wanted an intern or clerk, uh, and these are the increases that I'm, that I'm seeing, uh, court-appointed attorneys increase and an increase in the jury expenses are the three areas that I saw that when we sat and discussed, those were the things that you were looking at.
Right, right, um.
You can stay right there.
Sit here, it don't mean any disrespect.
None, thank you.
At all, um.
Her sheet very bottom. Very sheet there, dude.
Don't really know, um, where to start, I may give you more information than you wanted, um, first of all, I guess court-appointed attorneys, please. Let's see, it looks to me like so far this year, I have a bit of difficulty interpreting the monthly budget analysis reports, not because they're not good reports, just because I don't know how to interpret them, but it looks to me like we have used right at half, which may be accurate by the time we get to the end of the year this year, but I expect that it won't be because we have some offenses that are serious as far as the degree of the offense, all of the offenses, offenses are serious and we take them all serious, but these are cases that need to be tried that are first and second degree felonies. And there have been some conflicts of interest that we've had to deal with with regard to our contracted court-appointed attorney and he's had to, when he discovered the conflict, withdraw and I have had to appoint another attorney that doesn't have those conflicts to represent one of those defendants. That case has not been tried yet, but I expect it will be before the end of the year. May not go to trial, um, and if it doesn't, the attorney's fees, uh, will be more than normal, but not like they would be if we have a week-long trial like we did last week. it seems to me that very, very few criminal defendants are able to employ their own attorney. I don't quite have three years of watching this yet, but this year it appears that fewer people than the previous years have been able to afford to hire their own attorney. To try to tell you how much of an increase or it will need an increase is like trying to hit a moving target. You just don't ever know because the circumstances are constantly changing. I don't know if it's better for y'all, it probably is, to have a heads up to say, I think this is going to be more for two thousand twenty-five than two thousand twenty-four based on two thousand twenty-four, or for me to just say, we've used our money, I'm coming back to y'all in the middle of the year asking for more, that's something I don't want to do. If that happens, we will use other money that we have budgeted to, in other, uh, areas, other line items, to try to help take care of that, but probably it won't be enough. The other reason for a request for an increase in court-appointed attorney's fees are our cases involving children where CPS is involved. I believe what happened when I first took office was attorneys were paid very little, really not even enough to compensate them for their travel and appearances in court. And every attorney that assists us with CPS cases has to travel because we have no lawyers here that aren't involved, um, in government service or, uh, with other endeavors that just don't give them time to, to take on court-appointed cases. They were not paid at all for any work they did outside court, like interviewing children, trying to find witnesses, talk to witnesses, none of that was compensated. I'm not being critical at all, that's how it was and it saved y'all lots of money, or us, it saved us lots of money. When, when I took office, there's an opportunity then for lawyers who were assisting us with CPS cases to say, I'm losing money coming from Leveque to Snyder to help y'all with these CPS cases. And the attorneys who do assist with these cases are not looking to make money, they are looking to serve, but can't afford to lose money, uh, in attempting to help us. And so they were one by one telling me, I want off the list, I'm not gonna take any more appointments. Um, after consulting others, including the administrative judge for our region, I determined we've got to, we, we not, have got to, we have to pay attorneys more and so I'm paying them more. We have, even with the pay increase, we have just enough attorneys who will take court-appointed cases to cover the number of attorneys that we need. It takes at least three, um, court-appointed attorneys for each CPS case. Sometimes it takes more. It takes three if there is a mother and a father and children involved. It takes more if there is, if there are two or more fathers involved, so that there are children in the family that have different fathers, sometimes different mothers as well, a father has custody of the kids and they have different mothers, so that explains why we have to have so many lawyers willing to, uh, assist us. CPS cases have increased. It is not unusual for us to have eight or more CPS cases on the day that we hear those kinda cases, on the day that we deal with our CPS docket. So, questions about attorney's fees?
Well, once again, it's not something we can help.
This is true.
I mean, it's obviously, yeah.
You're right, it's getting worse.
And I'm really not trying to use that, I understand that, but I'm not trying to use that as leverage to say, you let me pay attorneys what I wanna pay them or you're gonna have to do it anyway. these attorneys that are working with us are not making what they could make if they use their time in other areas of their private practice, but they're willing to do it, they do view it as a service, um, and so we have an attorney from Abilene, two from Colorado City, two from Leveque and one from, actually, he lives in Leveque too, so three from Leveque who are, who are helping us.
And all of those cases are required to be recorded through the Indigent Defense Grant to track all CPS cases, um, and every attorney that's appointed, whether it's to the parental, the custodial parent, the non-custodial parent, the child, whatever, and like, we have to track on the forms, we have to track their hours that they've been doing, what they were compensated, it gets, is broken down into a whole lot more than what it used to be, so it is something that they're tracking potentially, maybe future funding or currently not, not.
The attorneys submit, um, detailed statements, um, to my office and I go over everyone before signing off on it. So far I haven't found anything that an attorney is requesting payment for that seems out of line, most of the time my thought process is, how are they doing that much work for what we're, what we're paying? Um, but I will continue to go over those just to make sure that no one's trying to take advantage. I just thought of one other attorney who does live in Skerry County who is assisting us as well, Ms. Taff is.
Yes.
Assisting us with those cases.
Are any of these attorneys required to assist in any way?
No, they're not.
And so if you don't pay them, then they're losing money, you're not gonna have any attorney to pay.
And that's what was happening when I thought, why is everybody leaving? It was because they were paid two hundred dollars for each court appearance and that's it, that's it. That's nice if you can keep them on board, it's nice for us, but.
So what do, what do you see as the increase now?
The amount of an increase?
Just ballpark.
I have.
We've got fifty-five thousand.
This Trey increased fifteen thousand and then the CPS cases and any cases that Trey can't, um, do because he has to come off of it.
Right, yeah, you need your budget.
And when I submitted the budget proposal, I was not aware that Mr. Keith was going to ask for an increase. And so that does, my proposal didn't include.
Right.
Uh, that, so I proposed an increase to two twenty-five from one seventy, so is that fifty-five thousand in addition.
So it is fifty-five thousand plus the fifteen for Trey.
Right.
But once again. We can, we can.
Right.
Okay.
Let me tell you my, the rest of my thought process, that may not be enough because I'm a horrible estimator, um. If it is too much, we can, I believe, use part of that money for interpreters' fees because I'm seeing an increase, just since I've been judge, seeing an increase in defendants who either don't speak English at all or speak English only well enough to convey basic messages, but legal terms, talking about an arraignment, talking about indigency, they have to have someone interpret for them. And so if I'm asking for too much, we can use it there if our need for that increases. But I believe I'm seeing that need increase.
When that need increases.
When, yeah. So we're going to try to... I will not be lavish with your money. But we can pay upfront or we can pay at the end for appellate attorney's fees if we don't make sure that we're adequately protecting parents' rights, defendants' rights. I'd rather do it right in the beginning than have to come back and redo it after having paid an appellate attorney to represent a defendant's interest, and then we have to redo what we've done.
Right.
So...
This is one unfunded mandate that I agree with. If the state's not going to pay for it, we need to. Our children have got to be protected from the people that are harming them.
Yes.
I think you're on, right on.
My thought process with indigent criminal defendants is if the county or the state, if the government is attempting to put someone in a cage for any amount of time, we have to be willing to make sure that their interests are adequately represented. Not saying they don't belong there. Some do, some don't. But if that's what we want to do, we got to make sure that they have good representation. And with Mr. Keith, from my perspective for the felony cases, they have good representation with him.
That's good.
And that all ties into the intern.
It does. I don't need an intern. I'll just tell you that right up front. I don't need an intern. I can handle what I have to do without help. Sometimes I take more time than other people think I should take, but that's how long it takes me. And so I promise you, I'm not up on the roof drinking iced tea, getting a suntan. It's kind of an awful picture to have. Sorry about that. My thought on an intern, and I encourage y'all to do what you think is best. We are going, in my opinion, we are going to be in a bind in a few years. And it's already July this year. This year's half gone. So those few years are going to speed by. And if attorneys that are presently serving the state, county, retire, we are very likely to have no one to replace them. My concern, I don't know this for a fact, but my concern, if that happens, there will be more ammunition for folks who don't think anything of value exists west of I-35 and who want to combine courts and do away with districts. They will have more ammunition if that happens. If we can't recruit attorneys to fill the positions that we're going to need to fill, it is much more likely that Skerry County is going to be given to another district so that we won't have our own district court. That then means someone will be handling felony matters, family law matters, CPS matters, civil cases, that doesn't know our community, doesn't perhaps have the same values that I think this community has, might not be as concerned about, frankly, keeping our community safe as we are. So my proposal is, it would be slow, but it would at least be something, doing something to get attorneys who have more of their career in front of them than behind them to be interested in our community. There are other things that I've been doing and other things that I'm planning to start doing to hopefully convince attorneys that this is a good place to be. It is a good place to raise your children. Sadly, attorneys need to make a living. So part of my pitch is there is money to be made here. Right now, if anyone in this community needs a family law attorney, they have to take their money and spend it somewhere else than they are. And thank goodness for those attorneys who are willing to come over here. There's money leaving this community that could be earned by attorneys who are here. So far, I want to tell you a success story in just a minute, but so far, I've not had a lot of luck in convincing people, "You don't want to go to Houston. You don't want to go to Dallas. You want to come here." Where? It takes you five minutes to get to work. You're not, having just come back from Houston, oh my goodness. You're not stuck at a standstill on a four or five-lane highway just trying to either get into Houston or get out of Houston. Not everybody thinks that that's good. I want to get people here and show them it's good. Get them involved with what we do, what attorneys do here, the kind of practice that they could have, and help them learn while they're here that this is a good place to be. You might not start off at six figures. I don't think this is an exaggeration. If we can get an attorney here, they will be busy the first day they unlock their door. I just, with one exception, haven't had a lot of luck making that pitch. So I want to take someone young, someone hopefully either between first and second year of law school or between second and third year of law school that would want to come intern for me. Sit in court, see what kind of lawyers practice here, observe the integrity of lawyers that practice here that they might not observe in a bigger city, and get someone thinking about, "Do I want to be able to let my children play in the backyard without someone watching them every minute? Or do I want to be afraid if my child is out of my sight and I live in Dallas?" Those are, those are the kinds of things that I want to do with an intern. I want the intern to fall in love with this community. Don't know how to do that unless I get them here and pay them something. And if someone has another idea, they don't have to work for me. It's, it's just my initial thought process. We're going to be in a big bind if we don't do something like this. So my success story, almost every attorney that I meet or deal with in court, if I have the chance, I talk to them about lawyers are overlooking a big source of income and a quality of life by not practicing and living here. I've talked to large firms to say, "You're overlooking revenue. Open a satellite office. Open it here." Or, "Open a satellite office and send an attorney to Snyder two or three times a week." I know that's not establishing residence here, but it's better than nothing, and I truly believe, once they get here, they're going to want to be here. This community has so many advantages, so much to offer. My success story is I got a phone call this morning from an attorney that practices in Lubbock in a larger firm in Lubbock that I had talked to about, "Y'all are overlooking money. You're just leaving money out there." Who told me by the fall, they will have an attorney coming to Snyder at least two or three days a week. That sounds like not a lot, but it's a huge step, in my opinion. That's a huge step. I'm going to also make a attempt to find time to travel to Lubbock, to the law school there, and visit with their placement, head of their placement office, so that if that person identifies someone who might want to be a general practice attorney in a small town, get to know the people, learn the community values, and then if there is an opening in an office where they can serve the community, they possibly could step into that office. My goal is, let's have some contested elections. Let's have people kind of worried about, "Somebody going to run against me?" Not saying we need that thought to be in, in the heads of those who are serving now, but competition ain't bad. So if my rambling hasn't gone too far astray, y'all have questions about that? I think we talked about...
Increase in jury expense?
Man, sir?
Jury?
Well, I was trying to think of what we talked about for a salary for someone who might be willing to...
Oh, the intern?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Yeah. Was it $18 an hour?
It was.
And I think it was a total of, the estimation was about $10,000 because of the feature.
Right. From middle of May or first of June to middle of August, when they would need to go back to school. I'd like to have different interns, different years, but if somebody's interested enough to come back for a second summer, that might be a good indication. So the other thing is, I believe, by working with attorneys in this community and the attorneys who serve this community around in counties, they can be trained up to be ethical, straightforward, trustworthy, and we're not just taking chances then on who might want to come just for the money. Does that make sense? So that's what I would like to do. Any, any questions about that? And this is a problem statewide. It's not just Skerry County. It's statewide. And I just think we need to convince people that bright lights, constant movement, constant noise is not always a good quality of life. All right, now, I've already, you said next was...
The jury expense.
Jury expense.
I think that was legislative, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Legislature gave jurors a raise, which they probably deserved, but like they do with a lot of things, they don't, counties are just supposed to take care of that. So that's an increase. It's almost impossible for me to predict how many jury trials we're going to have. I have for this month, a two-week civil jury trial on the calendar. Right now, all indications are they're gearing up for a trial. They're not acting like attorneys who think they're going to settle a case. So have a, a two-week trial there. We have an additional murder case that looks as if it will be a trial. I'd like to do it in July, but I'm not sure about it. It's very likely we'll have more jury trials in the second half of this year than we've had in the first half of the year. Another expense is... Another expense is calling a big group of people to get enough people to actually come when they're summoned. It, that is also difficult to predict. We try to call just enough that we're going to get enough people that we're not worried about. If, if two are challenged for cause, we're not gonna have enough people to... We have to have at least thirty-four people. That has not happened since I've been here, so we're kinda gradually reducing the number of folks that we call. But, we never know how many people over seventy-five that we're going to get summons, summonses out to, how many who are going to be ill, how many have things scheduled already so that I move them to a later panel, just because we don't do anybody any goodbye saying, you have to wave goodbye to your family as they go on vacation while you serve this community on a jury. So, that just kinda gives you a little bit of glimpse into how hard that is to to pin down as well. I'm also have intended to do this two years ago and still haven't found the time to really research it, talk with other judges who do this. I believe to increase the number of people who actually appear after they receive a summons, there has to be some kind of follow-up if they don't appear after receiving a summons. My opinion is that's got to be handled rather carefully. Some people just forget. I don't think we oughta be throwing people in jail because they ignore summons, that's not what I'm saying. But, there needs to be some kind of follow-up so that more people know if I don't show up, I'm gonna get a letter from somebody, I'm gonna have to come to someone, if it may be showing up for jury duty will be more of a priority. And I just haven't had time to do that yet, but I will. So, again, like Commissioner McCowen said, it's one of those things that if you gotta do it, you gotta do it. But, I don't wanna ever have that attitude with y'all. I don't wanna ever come in and say just 'cause I can, 'cause I appreciate y'all, I appreciate what you do, appreciate the way you serve the community. So, questions about that?
Well, everything took some may... There were points she made. You know, we're fortunate. We live in a town that so far you don't have to keep a solid eye on your children so far. And if we don't have attorneys, they just gonna run loose.
Right.
Okay? And I don't want that. Not quite double either. Because it's purely draft. It's just getting more and more and more. And, you know, think of Houston to get a lawyer. That's money that we're gonna be... I'll bet it's...
So, what percentage did you mean? I'm assuming that that's not in this, for the percentage rates for jury duties?
No. Uh, what did it go for, for jury duty? It went from, was it?
Went, uh, the first day was six dollars, it's twenty-eight, twenty-eight dollars today? First day? And then the, like, the days after that, if they're selected, it's forty-eight, I think?
Forty.
Forty, it's in the, it's forty-something. I don't know them, like, 'cause it's still...
Right.
Something. We've still been trying to get the recording fixed with Odyssey to be able to report it correctly.
Yeah.
And one, one way, in a roundabout way, that that benefits the community is jurors still have the opportunity to donate their pay to several things, child welfare.
Crime victims, um, the crime victim compensation thing. I think those are the two, main two that we do.
Yeah, 'cause when we get selected, the form we fill out, ask you if you want to donate. I got cheated, I got cheated last time. When I get you back on the level, I know that person talks to you.
And if that needs to be looked into, we...
I mean, we did put additional six thousand in that line.
Yeah.
We increased it six thousand, 'cause you just, I mean, it's hard to know how many jury trials we're gonna have. And then the jury expense line also has, like, um, because we do provide drinks and stuff like that at the jury room, so that they, you know, they're not just sitting there without anything. It's after selection, though. There's drinks and stuff, so we provide different things like that for the jurors.
And I will let y'all know, when someone goes in there and steals one of our drinks, we track them back. There you go. Kevin does. Actually, Kevin was saying, "It's no big deal," and I was saying, "Yes, it is."
So, we need to go to seventy-two?
Well, uh... The jury expense for this, for twenty-four is twenty, twelve thousand, and we're going to eighteen thousand, so six thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, seven, seven thousand would be the total. Would agree with it. Seventy-one, seventy-one?
Yes, well, plus the fifteen for Trey. 'Cause there's seventy-one on here, and then we add the fifteen thousand, it's not added in that.
So, I added the fifteen thousand into it, it brings it to eighty-six thousand.
Yeah, that's the total increase for that.
What was six thousand?
Yes.
That's the, uh...
Oh, you already added it?
I did in my, in my form here. Yeah, so it's not gonna be in there, it's on there. And I will change it on my budget form as well.
Oh, I've already started.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
That's the total increase for... Yes.
One's, one's Trey and one's...
Okay.
Attorney, two twenty-five, it's two forty then. Better make it two hundred and forty thousand, not two hundred and forty dollars. Ms. Summers, do you have a question?
No, I would just...
Okay, thank you.
I did have a comment. Her budget is tight. I mean, she's saying she's gonna take something for another line item to do the one-on-one attorney. I mean, you're picking a bear number there. For once, I agree. I think I average once a year.
You can go up on that average if you like.
Once a year. But I agree, I mean, I agree completely with this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Should be appreciated.
Anytime. Always enjoy the opportunity to come and talk.
Two-week jury trial.
All right. Whoever you need out of your hair.
Just not, just not three off the court.
That's because you're the reason why I webbed here.
All right. Well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
You're a fan.
Thank you.
If you need anything else, let me know, we'll try to...
Appreciate it.
For that.
All right, thank you. I know Heather and Derek and Tammy are in the special board. So, we'll do non-departmental last. I think Senior Center and Youth Center Extension Service is gonna be quick and easy, so let's start with Heather. You had an increase in your sports supplies, your vehicle maintenance, and your general liability insurance, which is... That's one of those that is going to go up?
Yes, um, the sports line, the reason why I went up with that originally is because, A, um, I I definitely need it for the prices going up with the equipment that we get. But, um, sports line was a new line, we had actually split it between programs. It was a programs line, and we just kinda cut programs in half and divided it between sports. I was hoping that it was only gonna be, um, ten thousand, but with our jerseys and things like that, we're having to find new vendors, and so that's making our prices go up. And then our general liability, uh, more kids, more sports, it's going up every year. We're actually in the process of getting NFL affiliation, so they can help pay for some of our flag football stuff. But with that being said, uh, they also require a million-dollar insurance policy, so I have to go through my insurance to see if that will, how that will affect prices and that. So it's just kind of, one thing affects the other, so...
Yeah.
And then the vehicle line is new, which is because I'm working on it.
You got a vehicle?
Yes, we will be getting it.
On a side note, we brought this to Leatherwoods January of last year, I think. If you'll look at the screen, you'll see what Leatherwoods has done with their concession trailer. And, uh, they just...
Completely new trailer.
Yeah, so that would be, if ready to go, other than, uh, we need to figure out the refrigeration in it, it's got a refrigerator in it.
And well, we use that onsite, and also, uh, I was telling the judge for this year flag football, we hope to meet with the school and do our tournament at the Snat, uh, Tiger Stadium for the kids, kinda give them a good feel. And then we would take the trailer and those with that, so we could sell concession and it be our own revenue, rather than somebody else selling concession.
Yes. So, uh, they owned that trailer, we went out and looked at it. When we did go out and look at it, we thought that would be pretty awesome.
It would, yes.
Got it cleaned up. The last thing it needs is tires and refrigeration, and it's ready to go, so... Um, the generator? Does it have a generator? I don't think it has a generator, but, uh, there may be...
Yeah, I, I've never actually gone in it, 'cause it was full of yellow jackets, so one being one in there, so I, I will go in there the first time today. Yeah, I didn't go in there last time.
There were a lot, a lot of yellow jackets, but it looks like you could put one on that tongue. Like there, I don't know, maybe. There's that. So, any discussion on the youth center?
I've done my notes, but I don't have it on here. Um, we had discussed also in her meeting was that, oh, we have it under permanent improvements, AC for the gym.
That's right. So, we are looking at AC for the gym as well. Um, you're getting some prices on that.
That's in the works. Um, and actually Terry stopped by, he's also helping me with the electrician. The concern right now is they're not sure if I have enough power, electricity to have a AC unit, so we're kinda looking at some options and seeing what we can do there.
Have they gotten by?
They haven't yet. Um, he's actually, he's putting together a better drawing than I did for his people, and then they're actually going, they're reaching out to another company to ask them about their units, and then Landry came by. I did try to follow up with him, he said he'd be following up with me as well. Um, a lot of people have been kinda busy with their summer plans, so I guess I'm just kinda waiting.
And, and in that thing, uh, we, uh, I've reached out to two and she's reached out to one.
Yes, I've reached out to somebody.
As far as donations. I haven't turned back recently.
And I am waiting. I, the lady, it's with Petrogan, um, group there out of Dallas. Uh, she has to contact her higher-ups, and they are usually pretty good about doing donations. I just don't know if they'll, you know, what size of donations with an AC unit, but I have reached out to them. And I have a couple, um, local people will be getting one. I always put, um, Kinder Morgan on the list and things. I do, I send them a letter all the time, so I'll send local, um, companies letters to see if they'd like to help support the local youth center.
If you can break through that wall.
I'm trying. Every year they get a letter.
So, yeah, we, if, if, we've got time until then to put it in twenty-nine or see how to get the donations come through. Um, I'll reach back out to mine and see where that stands.
Also send a letter to Caliper Energy. Okay, yes. They donate a lot to, like, the schools. They did a Hurley School for... And they've actually donated to us before, so I'll add that to mine.
Turbines, when, the turbines and the solar also.
Yeah, that's, they're very big. That's two that I've been...
Yeah.
That's one I've been talking to as well, so if you push, yeah.
Here we go, gets the bed, the bed will slow it on.
Okay, yes.
There's four, four of these.
Okay. All right, so any questions about the youth?
I can speak as not only the auditor, but also a grandparent of a child who goes there every day, so I do not worry about taking my grandbaby there, and I am very picky about where I take my grandbabies, so...
And that means a lot, if I'm very, your babies are my babies, so...
I've told you this multiple times, that, uh, you've taken it to places it's never been, and I'm proud of what you're doing with it.
It's a pleasure and an honor, truly.
If you haven't been there in a while, it's very organized, it's nice in every way. Appreciate the work you do.
Just need to get that down there, condition.
Before we melt. And she also is always looking for events, like, she's had the wrestlers come and did wrestling twice already. And actually, wrestling will be back in October, so, um, I did let them know, we don't have an AC yet, so we'll see how that goes. Um, I'm actually gonna, if, in the event that, you know, I have a good possibility we won't have the AC, uh, reaching out and asking to borrow some more, like, portico fans and things like that, that way we can get it. Yes, end of October. I think it's October twentieth to be exact.
I have a big portico on my bone. My personal bone. Don't even forget.
Okay, yes, I would love to, yes, that would be helpful.
You're welcome, too.
Okay. We also have a portico, so my husband probably wouldn't care. I'll go check out it, yeah. Yes. Well, good, good, good.
Thank you, Heather.
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna head out, because one shot's gonna get in there.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry to keep you so long.
No, you're fine, thank you.
And Tammy, you've got the same situation, you've got lunch going on, don't you?
Yeah, that's all right, they'll make it.
What's for lunch, honey?
Chicken breast and bow tie pasta and chocolate chip cookie.
Okay, so you increased your part-time, you wanna go?
I did, just so I have three part-time, and I just like to give them a raise every year, 'cause they do just as much as the full-time and don't have the benefits, and so I like to make sure I take care of my part-time as well.
What are, what are you paying them hourly?
Um, I think this will take most, take all three of them up to twelve. Right now, they're making it eleven.
So you can go to fifteen, all the way to fifteen. We've been talking about increasing that, for sure.
Yeah.
Get, get above McDonald's, like, just...
Well, senior says so, like, you should.
Exactly.
She does.
Yeah, most of these girls started at like nine, nine-fifty. I mean,
Yeah.
That's nothing. It's, and they step up when the full-time people are gone, when my head cook's gone, they have to jump in there, and, you know, they do, they do just as much. So, thank you so much.
Thanks. Appreciate your work.
It's a lead in there.
She also increased food by ten thousand and that's because costs have gone up, maintenance agreements have gone up also, so she increased that by fifteen hundred. Total increase is sixteen thousand five hundred for the senior center. Thoughts on senior center?
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Derek.
Awesome.
Yeah, let's see, uh, extension service capital outlay for a new truck and SCS supplies. Derek does love traveling, um, almost I believe throughout the state. And that truck has a hundred and seventy thousand on it right now. Not to make it worth an accumulation by the end of the year.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's two thousand, it's really, I haven't noticed the miles on it, it's just it's started, it's a two thousand seventeen?
Or eighteen?
Maybe it's twenty eighteen.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so it's starting.
Have you looked at any vehicles?
There's some in your, in your vehicle.
There's three, I went and priced three from the local dealerships.
Okay.
Base, basic models to get an idea of what it's gonna be, and they're all gonna be mid-sixties, uh, for a new vehicle.
What is the, um, trade-in value?
I do not have the trade-in value, uh, I just went and got the estimated cost of what it's gonna cost to get a new one.
And that's a sixties, it's a diesel?
Yes.
Okay. I know you call it trade.
Yes, and, and it's got, it'll be fourteen hundred, uh, to, roughly fourteen, fifteen hundred, but a gooseneck hitch in it. And most of the rebates, the GM initiatives and whatever initiatives they have because of the county are gonna be about that. So there, that's just gonna be an offset cost there.
And did you compare it to the Ford?
Uh, so it's sixty-four for GM, Ford's was sixty-seven, and Dodge was sixty-five.
And the, and that heavy-duty vehicle like that, it, the, you don't get the goose neck hitch?
No, they don't come with it. You, you have to pay for that.
Mine did.
Everyone I've said is it's gonna cost fifteen hundred to have a factory install of a.
That is weird.
Although it's my Ford, it'll come with a goose neck hitch.
Yeah, mine did too.
I've, every, everyone I've talked to, they've all said it's a.
I mean, it's in the bed.
I mean, they're gonna put it in.
I mean, no, mine came in the bed.
Oh, yeah, well, there, it'll come in the bed.
You have to buy the ball and stuff.
Oh, well, maybe that's what it was, fifteen hundred for the ball or whatever. It says factory, I mean, that is what, uh, I think Devin at GM wrote down is fifteen hundred for factory gooseneck.
Is the Chevrolet you're talking about?
Uh, that is the S, one SC value package, uh, it's a six, six liter.
I mean, twenty seven hundred.
Silverado, uh.
Uh, that's the, it's the, a custom, it's a one SZ, it's not up to Silverado, it's, it's the work version that has the nicer stuff.
Makes no sense not to have the goose neck hitch, but I understand, you just gotta get it.
Where, where did you price the goose neck hitch being installed?
That was from GM.
Okay.
With Devin.
Yeah.
Devin up there, that, that's his writing, that he said that that's what it'll, it'll be.
Well, let's get him to the tacos.
Well, not worth it to do it yourself. Well, it's liability, you know, I do it from, I've done it for myself lots of times, but it's a liability to do it for a county. Yeah, hauling kids and stuff, right? They need to have that on their shoulders, that's true.
Okay. Any more questions for Derek?
Was Ford the same one?
Uh, Ford didn't price me with, they didn't.
The goose neck hitch?
No, they didn't say exactly whether it, I don't know that it, if it has it or not, but that was.
I would think so. Yeah, mine came, I don't, I don't, of course, it may be the difference in, um, custom, so, uh, the, uh, Marriott or Platinum or whatever, might be the difference.
Well, I, the truck will be with you or hitch.
And mine was a Platinum.
Yeah, this, uh, it does not, I don't see, that it says tow package on it.
Huh, that is something. Why'd you buy a diesel for?
They were playing with from going.
Yeah.
Y'all okay with that budget?
Yeah, I guess.
Thank you. Sorry about all the questions.
What do you do with paces?
Exactly.
Oh, did you figure out that tree I brought you?
Uh, wing leaf, uh, soap berry, kilo of glyphosate.
With what?
Glyphosate.
Okay.
She just said a commissioner brought it, brought this in. Okay, I don't know which one, but I'll figure it out.
Thank you, Derek, appreciate it. No, I don't need it. I appreciate it. Well, I think it's as it is out there.
I got twelve, twelve of them.
Are you not using it? A little brainy?
Ten and a half. Okay, real quick, let's do the non-departmental. I know it. I'm not doing it intentionally, it's just gonna take a minute longer to do yours. Non-departmental, so you'll see that there's half million emergency reserves, I just, I still wanna keep putting in emergency reserves. Increase in emergency management by ten thousand. Postage is an increase of three thousand, drug screening is an increase of seven thousand, audit expense is twenty thousand, appraisal district fees is forty thousand, communications is forty thousand, computer maintenance is twenty-three thousand, property insurance is twenty-one thousand, auto insurance is nine thousand. Those are actual, so the auto insurance is a little higher. Property insurance, year after year, has been an eight percent increase in the last four years, nine percent for auto insurance, so. Yeah.
Appraisal districts, is that gonna, what we were talking about earlier?
That, uh, covers the increase from, the increase in their budget. So, I mean, we still have time to make that change before we adopt, if we refuse paying them to pay for appraisal districts, so.
And, and of course, just because we refuse it doesn't mean that the other entities will.
Right.
And if the majority doesn't, then we, we've gotta pay it.
Right.
Yeah, you can't pick and choose between entities, if the majority says no, all of us have to pay.
Right. And then, uh, public, official liability insurance is going up, county shared medical insurance. And I, I got to looking at it, at that again, there was an increase of seven thousand that we had to pay back at one time, so I'm showing a twenty thousand dollar decrease.
That was, um, we've gotta pay that this year, that was to clean up something back from when it was really in Melinda. There was a, it says every, every month that there is an amount, a carried amount over, and that's to pay that, to clean that up.
Right, for the tw- for twenty-four, or was that for, for twenty-five?
Yes, it was in twenty-four.
Okay, so I took that out of there and I brought it down a little.
Right, okay.
Uh, for non-departmental, it's six hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Is there anything that, it's, most of these, as you know, uh, from postage on down, those are actual increases that we can't get around. Do you wanna keep, for now, a half million in emergency reserves and an increase in emergency management?
Yeah, until we see the end of.
Okay, alright. So let's move on to, are y'all good with the non-departmental for now? Okay. Uh, let's move on to county clerk and election administrator, so.
I can solve this? No.
Alright, so, uh, what this would do would be to create a separate department for, uh, elections administrator. And Jeff and I had a conversation about this, uh, and so I did reach out to other counties, um, on the list, sir. And I got two, two phone conversations, five, uh, responses back, uh, on the list, sir. They were all positive towards NEA. That, and I'm gonna let Lori get into it, but, so you can see, the twenty-five, you have remove one employee and leave as is. The difference of what those budgets are is on the second page where it says total of county clerk. The third through fifth page shows adding a budget, uh, with elections administrator only, adding part-time and then adding a chief deputy, giving y'all some options. The very last page shows the differences in those. So, uh, the total increase, if you just hire, or just separate out elections administrators, twenty-five thousand four seventy. And I've worked this three or four different times, so these are the closest numbers I have now. Adding a part-time is fifty-one thousand roughly, and to add a, uh, full-time employee also is about a hundred and twenty thousand. So at this point, I'm gonna let Lori take over, because she has a lot of information to give.
Okay, I don't like to talk in front of people, even her baby. Please don't make me. Out of two hundred and fifty-four counties in the state of Texas, a hundred and thirty-five have election administrators. They're pulling away from being underneath an elected official, so they don't have to have that over their heads. I love what I do, but I don't get to
Focus?
Focus fully on elections. Um, I've been going through the active suspense and canceled for over two years now. Going back through to make sure, because the only way I can remove somebody is if I get notified. Like a death, or, and prior to me, there's still several that are not removed. I would love to be able to get more registered voters, we're only at ninety-two hundred at the most. Maybe, give or take a little bit, but we have, how many in our population?
Over sixteen thousand.
Uh, twelve, so we can't even, what is that, huh?
Twelve, we're down.
So, I mean, if I could do a lot of things to get my voter's registration up, if I could totally focus on that alone. But being in the office where we do birth certificates, marriage license, recording, criminal, I mean, there's so much that we do in this office that I can't just focus on elections. We've had thirty-seven new election laws just this year, and more to come, because of security and privacy. If I can't focus on that alone, then, you know, I don't feel like I'm doing my job. I love what I do, I enjoy it, but I think it's time for y'all to really look at separating it.
Yeah, it's hard for me to focus on all that, when I have all the other things under my hat that I'm doing, for the other birth certificate, as she said, death certificates, marriage license, recording, documents, um, commissioner's court. It just makes it easier, we have, after each election, there are so many public information requests. Crazy what they're wanting these days, copies of ballots, copies of voter lists, copies of, and it's just getting harder and harder and harder. And to have one person to be able to focus on that year-round would be amazing.
Each election is not just having an election, uh, we do voter's registration, we do, I have to go over the abstract of felonies, abstract of death, there's a lot of different things, DPS applications, which is where we get most of our, you know, registrations. Today, we had a lady come in wanting to register to vote, she was already registered to vote. She did not know that she was registered to vote. Well, they do it during DPS registration, they don't know they're doing it. You know, I mean, a lot of people don't. If I could reach out to the college kids that are from here, they can do a vote by mail, even if they're not in this county. As long as their residence is here, if I could reach out to those kids, I don't have time.
And you'll notice, I'm not asking for another person to replace her. I'm gonna do my darn best to run it on two and a half people.
Well, let me ask you a question. If you're not gonna add a person, then why can't you just put in that office and do that for them?
Because she wants to, because I still need, if, I'm gonna have a, well, she could, but she can't focus if she's still doing that stuff. And it's hard to sit back there and look at people when they come to my counter, and she's just sitting back there looking like, you know. That, I get the voters mad at me, because, well, you've got a girl sitting back there, she won't help me. Well, that's not her job. I would have to move her out of that office somewhere, so that she can focus on that and not be interrupted by the people in the office and the, the, everything of the office. I mean, we're gonna move her, if y'all approve this, we will move her into another room for now. We would like to eventually, maybe in time, if this goes through, to put her down at the armory where our machines are at, in Jason's training, if he had, if, when he gets ready to give that up. That way she can have early voting down there, she could run everything out of that and get it off that bottom floor. But yeah.
We've had a lot of people complain that there's not enough privacy on the first floor during elections.
I don't know where she got the office, though. I don't know where she got the office, though.
Where?
Diane, where she, she'll still.
I don't like going in there. I think if you was, the last time I was looking for something, I think everyone was cool. Oh, really? They got cleaned out?
The district attorney, they still use that office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is, it, it, and, and I, I know the answer to this, that I want you to answer it, about the perception that's out there as far as elections. Is it part-time, is it full-time?
It's full-time.
Is it just a certain time of year, is it all year?
All year.
What makes it all year?
All year is voter registration. I'm continuously having to make sure somebody will come complain, this person's dead. Well, I have to do the research, because, I mean, if no one's told me that they were deceased, I can't just remove them. So I do, I do the research, I do look up, find a grave, you know, I mean, there's other websites that I have to go on, because I don't always get it from other counties, from other states. If they've moved out of this county, out of this state, I don't know that. I mean, I send out, every two years, we have to do a mass mail-out. Out of nine thousand, over nine thousand registered voters, we get so many back, their voter's cards. Well, the state says I have to go back and send in them a notice, say, hey, have you moved? Well, it doesn't matter, because I still, I'm sending it right back to that same address, I'm gonna get it back. But the state says, you have to. Well, if the state says I have to, I'm going to.
Right, yeah, you have to.
I mean, voter's registration, in some counties, it's divided, uh, it's not in the county clerk's office. The tax assessor does it, or, you know, the sheriff, like in Borden County, it's the sheriff and the, um, tax assessor.
Right.
If I'm correct. But, I mean, we do it all in this office.
I know what she's talking about, as far as research goes, because I think you finally get, y'all finally corrected it, but.
Yes.
My mother is still getting.
Yeah, they can't, we get called, we get angry mail, we get angry calls all the time from voters or residents that we send it to this address, well, I don't, they don't live here, well, until they tell me, until I get something from them, I have to keep sending it, so it's.
So if, if we go forward with an EA, um, it's, uh, there's a committee that has to be put together. And it would be, uh, county judge, county clerk, uh, tax collector, and the, uh, chair for each party. But we have Democratic and Republican Party, if there were any other parties, they would sit there as well. And they would determine who that election official would be. And they would determine who that election official would be. What else am I missing on that aspect of it?
Yeah, the committee would be the ones then to hire the person. I guess the commissioner's court still has the authority over the budget of that department, but they would be the ones that would do the hiring, the firing, or whatever.
I will say that because, like Hermolyne, I will be bringing in income to offset, not a lot, no, not a lot, but I will be bringing in income. If they rent our machines, just like the city did for their prior, this election they just had, we charge them.
And you have to do that.
Right. And in that case.
No, I mean, I can, I can charge as an EA, yes.
As an EA, we have to hold what they ask.
But I can still charge them if they're not part of our.
So from what you just said, if we, if we were to approve this position, there's no guarantee that she gets.
I would ask to get it correct, yes.
Yes.
But they could put you to somebody else.
Yes.
They're gonna have, that's a hard job to do with no experience whatsoever. I mean, not knowing the laws, not going to school, not being trained in it, it's.
I would ask for it.
Yes. But you're right.
As I'm doing.
You're right, too.
Because you've been doing it.
I've been doing it for almost six years.
Yeah.
Now, there's no question.
And I did it prior to.
She did it at Hermolyne, for Hermolyne I stayed. And that's one thing with, as an EA, if they, if an entity, any of our entities ask us to hold, right now, if the city says, can y'all do my election? I can say, no, I don't want to. I'm not, no, I'm gonna do it. Sorry. Figure it out. As an EA, you don't have a choice. But we can also charge them more because we are gonna be post, she would be here, who are posting their notices, doing all of their, every, getting their workers, doing it all. So that would be able to charge more for that, for those, that extra service. I think Garza County has one. They just made this position too, and.
Stevens County's.
Stevens County just started this in Breckenridge.
Like I said, there's a hundred and thirty-six EAs.
And she charges them.
She charges them extra.
She charges, like, they charge all the entities like five or six thousand dollars a year, period, and then charges them to do their elections on top of that.
Well, let's go down there.
There's options there.
Because they have a ward and theirs is different, though.
I don't, I know we won't, we have talked to Hermolyne and Ira before, and Snyder always wants us to do theirs for them or help them with them. The college and the hospital, not so much because they don't, they haven't had one in forever, you know? And I get that. I mean, as far as on a regular annual supply part of the budget to it. But they would pay if they, we get, if they do have one, then they'll have to pay like everybody else. So it isn't, it's not a big source of income, but there is a source of income that comes along with it to help offset it to a point.
I could go on for hours about why you should. I could, I could, but.
I'm getting hungry.
My suggestion is you do this position for 2025, and if you're overwhelmed, you get part-time the next time. I don't, I don't see funding a part-time and another chief deputy the first year. I mean, she's gonna be on it.
Well, that will, she, if.
As her own, that's the only job she does.
Right.
So I wish to know if she can do it or not. It's first year for 2025. She may be able to handle the job for 2025. If she says she can't, then in 2026, she comes back and asks for a part-time or another.
Right now, that's another thing, that right now, my part-time is helping her. We've got our part-time, that's all my part-time's doing right now is helping her with voter registration. So when I no longer, then my part-time will then be helping in the other areas because that will be instead of that other person, Kaylee will now be my part-time for the office as far as everything else. So that's where not putting another person answers your question better while ago because Kaylee is right now doing all the voter registration stuff, helping her.
So you said a while ago, we approve the, the, your hiring workplace.
No, I'm gonna do it with the two people I have and Kaylee. I'm keeping my, my, my part-time, like I said, she's doing, so everything will go on to her, and if you allow her a part-time, then she'll have that help with who she's, the way she is helping out.
Do you think you could do it?
By myself?
If that, if we approve the EA.
If you approve the EA, I could, I will try my damnedest to do it by myself. But I will say that if you approve this and.
The cost of election workers.
Cost of election workers.
During early voting.
During early voting, I wouldn't have to hire them. If I had a full-time employee, those two, us two could handle the early voting. I have to be there regardless, just like I have to be regardless here. But if I had a full-time employee, I wouldn't have to hire early voting election workers. We could do it ourselves.
Even having a part-time, she wouldn't have to have, she would still have more help during early voting to not have to hire people to work. Because we're having to do twelve-hour days for a whole, at like two weeks, we're doing twelve-hour day. So, and weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. So the cost of hiring people, you know, to help do that this way, if there was, that would not be.
Find them.
Yes, finding them is getting.
Is a challenge, for sure.
So if you get this, will your mom sit up?
My mom will not be able to.
Well, not.
This next one would be her last one. And I told her that she wouldn't be able to because it's nepotism. She said, well, fine, but, you know.
She'll come visit.
She would come visit, yes.
But based on that, you're saying if you had the part-time, you wouldn't need the election worker line?
Well, no, not all of them, just for early voting. You're still gonna have election day.
We still have to have all the places open.
Yeah, you're still gonna have the workers for election day.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But perhaps two weeks of early voting, they would handle all of it and be available and not, where we have been having to use her mom and different people to work during early voting.
Okay.
How many voters will your ladies do in this office?
I'll make her come greet them for free.
In that office without a part-timer at least, and she's sick or on vacation or family leave or anything like that, that office is gonna be closed.
Yes.
Nobody's gonna be able to get anything.
Yes, and God forbid something happened during an election. I have to have the voter's registration open. God forbid something happened, I have to have somebody there that knows the programs, that can look up a voter, that can, that's the, that's one of the things.
So you'll answer, you would answer to the committee and not her, so you're correct? So more or less, you're getting rid of her?
Yeah. You better quit.
Where, where would your office be? We're talking about next year.
Next year. If, I don't know when the EMS is going to be having their building done. I would like for y'all to consider me moving over there. There's a big room and there's two offices.
Yes.
Where I can use to lock up.
And the EMS is here.
Yes, to lock up.
There is.
But it would be a good place for me to have early voting as well.
Yeah, there's another option there. So all your election machines are in a room.
Mm-hmm, over there at the Armory.
Those can be moved to a lock, which the room's locked.
Yes.
But those can be moved to another part that is caged, it's locked, and then you could have that office up there. And that could be, that would be a whole lot sooner than the education center. That would be you.
Yeah, that would definitely.
Until that, yeah.
That would be a big enough office, for sure.
Still, thankfully, with the machines locked up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they would still be at the Armory.
Yep, to her, to Diane.
I don't know if they want, wanna come visit me there.
I'm saying this is, like you said, me walking in there and nobody helping me and wondering why she's not helping me.
Yeah, because she would no longer be my deputy. She would be authorized to do anything for you.
Because that's an issue with, that's already an issue downs with the property taxes and the, you know, you've got, you've got people that are property tax workers and vehicle workers and you walk up and you wonder why.
The other people are not helping.
Yes.
Yes.
So on the part-time, you can set, like we do on some of the others, if it was part-time, like we set twenty-five thousand, that's the annual, and, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's what we do for the golf course.
That's why I have my money, twenty-six thousand, except my money.
We just set this is the amount, and then that's it. So, and then if the point comes where something happens and it goes over, then it's a line of transfer later in the year.
Well, and she's gonna probably, there'll be some time during election time that they will go over that part-time hours, but it won't be consecutive or for a long period.
Right, which doesn't make them a full-time person as long as it's not a nine-week.
Insurance.
So who would determine the hourly rate could be your part-time, when you go and go with.
It would be.
That would be.
If she, or the election administrator.
Would be the one to determine what they pay them hourly.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Ms. Summers, is that twice today?
Well, she's getting out of her comfort zone. I'm still kinda confused on, so my thought is, okay, you're gonna make the position and you're gonna give her a salary with the next budget. So when is this committee gonna meet and what if they say no?
Not Lori?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, all right, so.
I mean, I'm rationalized that somebody, you know, when you got a committee, then they're gonna have different opinions.
You gotta remember that most of these are county officials.
Right. Yeah, so the, and, and the, the chairs know Lori and know where she's at. So, I mean, if it would, if the committee decided not to, I mean, we would cross that bridge and, and see. But the process is that first, the commissioner's court has to agree to it and put it in the budget, and I think there may be a resolution.
Yes, there is a resolution.
That we have to do. And then within ninety days, the commission, committee has to meet and make the determination. And so, and then there's another, I was looking at it a minute ago, I don't remember all the timelines, but it would, we would do that after August twentieth, when we set the budget. We would, we would go ahead and do that resolution that day if the court determined to go ahead and say yes. Then the following, within the ninety days, the committee would meet and discuss that and then have it ready for January one.
So are y'all going to discuss at this time or wait until a later time to discuss the salary for the EA position?
Yeah. So the salary that's there, thank you, is an average. So I took all of the department heads, averaged them out, and that's the average of it for Unless I did it wrong, and Angela, you can correct me if I.
Oh, I'm here, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna, yeah, that's, yes, that is an average. I'll put.
What page is it?
Uh, second page.
First of all.
Yeah, this starts the EA, actually, just because the EA. That would be, that would be her budget.
Yes, that would be the salary. That's an average.
With the part-time, EA only with the part-time or with a chief deputy?
I don't have a problem whether it's, you put her office in the.
I'm gonna make a big O sign and hang it on.
About here.
So.
You come in.
Wear stripes.
This is the hour, so.
Going through everything right now, what's your thought process? Is it yes or no on EA?
Yes. I do.
Just looking for a consensus.
I'm leaning that way. I'm just not totally convinced, but.
Okay.
What do I need to do, Jeff?
Convince.
I said, what do I need to do? He's convincing.
You have questions?
No.
He may in the future.
Oh. It's a work in progress, and it's, yes, it's expansion, yes, we want our elections done right, yes, we want these people that have not been voted, we want them there, and we do need somebody to go get them and at least provide them opportunity.
And it's out from underneath an elected official.
Right, not that I do anything wrong, but it just, when I'm on the ballot, that's not being run by me.
Here's my deal. If any of us five at this table have a problem with what's going on, are we gonna have to go have a fight with the committee to get something done?
May not be a fight.
I'm just saying if we have a employee issue, which that's very potential.
Sure.
Are we gonna, you know, if we, if we have it happen sort of disciplinary, we're gonna, is it gonna be between y'all, the committee, or are they gonna be back between us? Yeah, so do we lose, do we lose control?
You hold the budget.
You hold the budget.
You hold the budget down in your hands, that's pretty good.
The court holds the funds. You determine the funds, so you have that. But I would also read the statute that talks about the election administration. There's a whole, I mean, there's more than just the election committee and all of that. There are, it goes into more details about that, and I can't remember the exact, it's under government code, is it government code, election code?
I think it's election code.
Election code thirty-one point zero three one and then through three seven.
Yeah, and.
The employment of county election administrator may be suspended with or without pay or terminated at any time for good and sufficient cause on the forfeits voted the county elections commission and approval of that action by a majority vote of the commissioner's court.
So you do.
So there's an extra step in there.
And then y'all do it.
Yeah.
With the commission, but.
It's kind of a checks and balances.
Yeah.
Because if she did something, because this is just a, an example that potentially could happen.
Give me as the example.
Okay, say Dan's on the ballot and he loses that election and he says, she cheated, she caused me to lose the ballot, lose it. Well, if y'all could file a complaint then, but it's a checks and balance. So the commission has to say, you know, whatever they vote, they hear the whole thing, and then the court would also say it so that it would be, she's not being biased in running the election. She couldn't be discriminating in any kind of way in that way. Whereas if you have the county elected official running it, it does look a little shady.
You can't, you know, you don't have any authority.
Melody's on the ballot, and Melody always, always, always wins if she has somebody running against her, you know.
And I'm not going to jail for any of y'all.
That's what I told the issue.
My, my, my point was, we already, we've all had phone calls, we get phone calls, hey, this department is not there, they're, they're not answering their phone, and people are, they're not gonna call the committee to say, we can't ever get on up there.
They're gonna call y'all.
Call one of us five.
That's okay, I'm, I'll be on the committee. I don't, believe me, I don't mind having a meeting.
So what is.
We know that.
You don't mind having a meeting?
I don't. At least you wouldn't have a meeting.
County clerk. County attorney. And the two, five, I believe, unless there's somebody I'm missing.
No, there's only five.
Yeah, it's five, honey.
County clerk, county judge, tax collector, and the two parties.
Because then it will be.
If we ever got a Green Party or a Libertarian Party, then it could be more, but no.
So my point is, if we have a complaint against her, there's actually ten people, them five plus this five.
There'll be nine.
Be nine.
Same nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have nine people deciding potentially the action to be taken against her instead of just five.
Or just one, actually. Because you, you got.
Because, yeah, currently, it's, she's under Melody, so.
to be taken against her instead of just five.
Or just one, actually. Because you.
Because, yeah, apparently, she's under Melody, so if she did something wrong, Melody could, like, get. But she could.
Well, it's show what she did.
Well, uh.
I think you get more accountability.
Yeah, I think that's the point of it. The point of what the, the creation of it is more accountability versus elected official who is only responsible for the, to the voters and that, you know, there's no one to.
I know it's a hard decision, I understand that, because it's adding more money, but I just want y'all to trust me, I promise you
I believe.
That I can do it.
It should be bonded as well.
Yes.
And that's in the project, we add that in.
Yeah, so she will be bonded, she'll sign a note, she, she'll have to take a note, she'll have to be bonded. I mean, there'll be all those steps in place.
I'm all for Roger Oakes, you better know.
Well, I think if we do, our office needs to be somewhere where people can come in and just like.
That's why I said, the parking lot at the.
The back Armory, the, when there's the door that you can go straight in.
We got a trailer.
I don't like bad weather, so that would not be a good idea.
I mean, we can do some signage or something to show people, when you're going down Armory, that it's.
I do think I could get a lot of more of the elderly out if they would, didn't have such a hard time to get in. And right there, in that parking, they don't have to walk up steps, I mean, it's just one step. And there's also a ramp there, because I have to have handicap accessible regardless. Um, I think that I could get more elderly to vote if they can, if it's not as hard for them to get in and out.
Well, I mean, you know, that's a good point. Either in, for this place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
And that.
I do have a little lady that I push in a chair every year, every election. She, I have to push her in a chair, and she expects me to. And I do it every time.
She wants you to rank to her car, she wants you to push her.
Yes, she comes to the door, and then I push her to the table.
I just don't know why I'm not getting support for the AMX.
I don't look good in straps.
No, we got, we got two guys that had a fire at, at another way.
Good.
It's not good company.
South of Michigan.
You put the lake in that shit.
It's not a good day, the wind's blowing.
Uh, Art and, uh.
Blondo.
And you only had one six-wheel drive, and they've already called for, uh, mutual aid from two of the counties.
So it's a bigger.
It's throwing, it's throwing about five acres pretty quick.
We got twenty-nine hour winds right now, so that ain't gonna help.
No, let me wrap this up real quick then. Uh, EA, is it yes?
Thank you, guys.
Do you want EA only with part-time or with chief deputy?
Part-time.
Let's try, EA with part-time. Is that good to go?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Y'all all good with that?
You good with that?
What would be the total additional with, with that scenario? Is it five thousand that you'll need for election, or, yeah, for election worker, if you have part-time?
It's still gonna be.
Depending on how many elections.
All right, we do.
We never know.
It's about fifty-one thousand.
If we have any other kind of election, if we don't have any school elections, or college elections, or.
If we get those, that amount goes down.
But, they're gonna pay for it, they'll pay for it, so, yeah.
All right.
But some of that may be reimbursed.
Yes.
Start charging me.
I will charge as much as the state allows.
Yeah. Okay, let's see.
Look at you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go up south, that I've been waiting for.
We're not there yet.
Line of transfers, uh, report into the county court, copper line sixty-fifty out of the business. That's that new, this software we're using.
Okay.
Two thousand, and she's returning out of office supplies and maintenance and repair, and just, uh, to her, complete her training requirements this year. And then there's one budget amendment, it's county clerk, records management, seven thousand, and it's to purchase a large capacity scanner for recording documents. Is that one of those?
I might most approve, while I'm trying for budget.
All in favor? Okay, approval is countable table?
Countable, it's two million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and ninety-eight cents.
Might most replicate the bills.
All in favor? Okay, and Ms. Summers, on the executive session, that's a placeholder with the new, uh, software we, that we have, so it'll be there. And if there's anything in executive session, we'll, we'll show something next week. All right, uh, we will be adjourned.
All right.